Ελλάσει φέμ, είμαστε μαζί εδώ.
Τώρα δυο φωνόμας εδώ στη συχνότητά μας. Εδώ λοιπόν στον Elas FM, σήμερα πέμπτη δεύτερη μέρα του Νοέμβρη και είμαι πάρα πολύ χαρούμενος. Είμαι πάρα πολύ χαρούμενος γιατί έχουμε μαζί μας μια νέα πολιτική, η οποία έχει να μας πει πάρα πολλά και ενδιαφέροντα. Ο Δημήτρης Φιλιπίδης είναι πάντα στο μικρόφωνο και μαζί μας σήμερα φιλοξενούμε για την πόλη της Νέας Ιόρκης, για τον δήμο της Νέας Ιόρκης, για την θέση του Δημοτικού Συμβουλίου, το City Council της Νέας Ιόρκης, για τον District 22, την κυρία Kelly Klingman, η οποία είναι η υποψήφια του ρεπουπλικανικού κόμματος και με την οποία θα κάνουμε μια συζήτηση εξαιρετικά ενδιαφέρουσα. Θα την κάνουμε και στις δυο γλώσσες, και ελληνικά και αγγελικά, δείτες, Δημήτρης Φιλιπίδης, "On the air of Elas FM and I'm very honoured to be together today with a young politician, a young woman that she's really into politics but not in the old fashion, in the fashion that we want. She's a person who dares to tell the truth and she's somebody who really wants to make the difference. Of course, we will have a conversation bilingual in both languages." Θέλω να ευχαριστώ πάρα πολύ τον Ηλία Φύλα, ο οποίος βεβαίως είναι ένθερμος, υποστηρικτής αυτής της προσπάθειας. "I want to thank Hylia Fila, who is a supporter of this candidacy and it means a lot. And of course, my friend Effi Eftichia, who has been from the very first moment on top of things. Kelly, thank you so much for being with us today and I really appreciate you being here today."
"Thank you, thank you for inviting me and yes, it's great. I have so much support, which is just amazing. You know, this movement is bringing in everybody from Astoria, all kinds of different walks of life, also different parties. We have a coalition of Democrats, Republicans and independents. And at the end of the day, I'm a mother here, I have twins, I'm invested in the community, I've been here a long time and we just, we all just want a voice in City Hall and we want our city, we want our city back, we want it back to the way it was. We are tired of being ignored and neglected and you can see it on our streets and you can see it in our schools and you can see it all over the city. But most importantly, Astoria, beautiful Astoria, it needs to, we need to come together and we need to fight back this communist agenda that's just really hurting our city."
Λέμε στην κυρία Klingman λοιπόν, την ευχαριστούμε πάρα πολύ που είναι στο στούντιο. Η ίδια μας λέει, αυτή ευχαριστεί που την έχουμε εδώ πέρα κοντά μας και μας τονίζει ότι σε κάθε περίπτωση είναι ένας συνδυασμός δυνάμεων και του Δημοκρατικού και του ρεπουπλικανικού κόμματος, είναι πάρα πολλοί ανθρωποί στηρίζουν την υποψήφιότητά της, όπως λέει, θέλουμε την πόλη μας πίσω, "We want our city back", θέλουμε την πόλη πίσω, όπως αντονίζει, υπάρχουν πολλά προβλήματα στην πόλη της Νέας Ιόρκης, στους δρόμους, στα σχολεία, στην ασφάλεια και στην όμορφη Αστόρια, στην οποία, όπως λέει, πρέπει να γίνουν πολλά για να πάρουμε την πόλη πίσω και να πολεμήσουμε αυτή την κομμουνιστική ατζέντα. Κι αυτό είναι κάτι στο οποίο θέλω να σταθώ. "You used the magic word communist agenda. You know, a few years ago, when I was here younger, as a younger journalist, I would say that I can never believe that there can be a communist agenda in the United States of America. But that took place back in 2007. Now, things have changed so dramatically that unfortunately, this makes sense. And we see this, for example, with Ocasio-Cortez. We see this with many other politicians and we see this in our daily routine. It's not only the rhetoric or, you know, just a spread of words. We see it on a daily basis. What can you do to combat this communist agenda?"
"Well, the first thing we need to do is we need to go out and we need to vote. We need to take the battle back at the ballot box. We need to take the ballot back to the ballot box and we need to look at our politicians and really research them like we used to and see what their ideologies are, see what they're behind. And we should not be voting for candidates that have rhetoric that is against the police. Our current city councilperson does nothing but champion the NYPD being completely abolished. It's not even that she wants to defund it. She doesn't believe in police, she doesn't believe in prisons, she doesn't believe in a lot of, you know, faith-based values, she's not for the community and these are things that we should not be having representing our voices in City Hall."
Λέμε, ρωτήσαμε την κυρία Kelly Klingman, όταν λέγαμε πριν από χρόνια για κομμουνιστική ατζέντα, φαινόταν σαν ανέγχρωτο. Τώρα δυστυχώς είναι καθημερινότητα. Η ερώτηση λοιπόν είναι, πώς μπορούμε να καταπολεμήσουμε την κομμουνιστική ατζέντα; Λέει λοιπόν η κυρία Klingman, με το να πάμε να ψηφίσουμε, με το να κατεβούμε στις εκλογές, πρέπει να κάνουμε έρευνα, να δούμε ποιος είναι ο κάθε ηπωπσύφιος, ποια είναι η ατζέντα του, ποια είναι η ιδεολογία του. Πρέπει να στηρίξουμε αυτή την πόλη. Δεν μπορεί η σημερινή, η κυρία Saban, η υποψήφια, να είναι εναντίον της αστυνομίας. Δεν θέλει απλά "defund" της αστυνομίας, δεν θέλει αποχρηματοδότηση, θέλει κατάργηση της αστυνομίας. Δεν θέλει φυλακές, δεν θέλει να υπάρχει νόμος και τάξη. Αυτό πρέπει να πολεμήσουμε. "And Kelly, this is one of the most important issues today in New York. After Covid, everything changed. There is no order, there is no law, there is nothing for me to make me feel secure in my own city. I never felt like this the last 17 years I've been living in New York. So, do you have the same feeling and how do we change this reality?"
"I do have the same feeling, which is one of the reasons why I decided I couldn't sit on the sidelines anymore. And when the opportunity presented itself for me to run for office against Tiffany Caban, I decided to do it because somebody needs to stand up, we all need to come together. There are ways to combat what's going on in Astoria and it's by, you know, your city councilperson is responsible for your day-to-day life and she should be here working with all the different agencies to combat the problems. But the thing is, is that she doesn't want to work with all the different agencies. She just, her office is never open and she's not communicating to the agencies the needs that we have. So, I saw a video recently of something that's going on in Harlem, to make a perfect example. And in Harlem, they've lost two big retail stores on a corner. So, they also got moved into with a homeless drug shelter and now they have all kinds of those sidewalk sheds have been demolished and the garbage has been left there. So, on 125th Street, it is pure urban decay. And the way they addressed it is they brought everybody together. You had the chief of police, you had the chief of the DOT, you had the chief of Department of Environmental Protection and you had all the agencies come together and walk that corner and say, "Okay, what is your job? What can you do? Okay, DOT, we can take care of this. Police, what can you do about this? We can take care of this. Department of Homeless, what can you do? Well, we can work with this and we can clean this up." And coming together, they're gonna, they're gonna be able to fix that problem. So, in office, all I wanna do is work with all the agencies, work in liaison with the people in the community and make sure our district is being addressed with all the problems that we have here. I can hardly walk across the street. I told my kids recently, "You have to walk across the street, you can't just look left and right anymore. You have to look on the sidewalks, you have to watch for people running red lights on mopeds. It's very dangerous to even walk around the streets."
Απσολούτ, ρωτήσαμε λοιπόν την κυρία Kelly Klingman, την υποψήφια, Δημοτική Σύμβουλο, τι μπορεί να γίνει για να αλλάξει το θέμα για παράδειγμα της ασφάλειας; Μας είπε ότι αυτός είναι και ο λόγος που κατεύει και η υποψήφια, δεν ήταν κάθε σε μια καρέκλα και αν κάνει κριτική, αλλά πρέπει όλοι να συκώσουμε ανάστημα, πρέπει όλοι να προσπαθήσουμε, υπάρχουν τρόποι να το κάνουμε, πρέπει να είμαστε υπεύθυνοι για να τους φέρουμε όλους μαζί να δουλέψουν. "To work all together", όπως μας είπε. Η κυρία Kaban δεν θέλει να δουλέψουν όλοι μαζί, το γραφείο της είναι κλειστό. Δεν θέλει να συνδυαστούν, να συνεργαστούν όλοι οι παράγοντες, όπως για παράδειγμα, δεν θέλει να συνεργαστούν με την αστυνομία. Στο Harlem για παράδειγμα, είδε ένα βίντεο η κυρία Klingman, όπου δύο retail stores, δύο μεγάλα μαγαζιά κλείσανε, όπου μεταφέρθηκαν εκεί πέρα shelters για καταφύγια, για άστεγους. Εκεί όπου όμως υπήρχαν σκουπίδια παντού, εκεί όπου υπήρχαν τεράστια προβλήματα. Όμως ξαφνικά καθίσαν όλοι κάτω, η αστυνομία, το Department for Homeless, το DOT, το τιμήμα μεταφορών, το τιμήμα του περιβάλλοντος, καθίσαν όλοι και λένε, "Εσύ θα κάνεις αυτό, εσύ θα κάνεις το άλλο" και όλοι μαζί προσπαθούν να λύσουν την κατάσταση. "And of course, if I'm not mistaken, one of the retail stores is closing target because there is so much shoplifting."
"Yes, and your city councilwoman just put out a statement saying that retailers are lying and there is no shoplifting, which is crazy, just to insult everybody that are business owners and that we see every day. We see shoplifting every day. On 34th Avenue, they're losing their Walgreens, they just lost their bank, all their storefronts are closed and that just leads to more crime, more dirty streets and just, and people wanting to move and wanting to leave. And just to have somebody who represents us to come out and say, "Oh, I read this study that says retail theft and shoplifting is exaggerated to cover up windfall profits is crazy, that makes no sense."
Αυτό που ρωτήσαμε την κυρία Kelly Klingman, τα μαγαζιά που κλείσανε στο Harlem, κλείσαν γιατί κάνανε shoplifting, κλέυανε οι πελάτες, υποτίθεται, και μάλιστα μας λέει, "Ναι, απόλυτα δίκαιο, έχετε;" Μάλιστα κάποιοι λέγανε ότι δεν υπάρχει, δεν υπάρχουν κλεψιάς, παρόλα αυτά υπάρχουν κλεψιάς. Παρόλα αυτά κατηγορούν τους επιχειρηματίες, αλλά οι επιχειρηματίες χάνουν λεφτά. Το βλέπουμε στο 34th Avenue, έκλεισε το Walgreens, το βλέπουμε σε όλη την Αστόρια, οι επιχειρήσεις οι οποίες έχουν μεγάλο πρόβλημα και πρέπει κάτι να υπάρξει πάνω σ' αυτό. "Now, because it is a very critical period of time, we see what is taking place in Israel. And we see something that, I was playing videos before with all the people raising the Palestinian flag, with all the people tearing apart all the announcements about the hostages. We see really violence on the streets of New York. We see people burning American flags. We see people staying on the same page with those calling for jihad and the holy war and kill the ones who don't believe in our faith. What is your answer to this? I mean, is this a picture that we cannot avoid or there are things that can be done?"
"I think at the end of the day, and this goes back to the whole ideology of the people that we elect, is that we need to elect leaders like we had before, like Peter Vallone, who ran this district for 30 years, that care about, you know, not fanning the flames but cares about creating a peaceful environment. And when you have a party, and not just the Democratic Socialist Party, but the Working Families Party is also another party that has been fanning the flames of some of these protests right after something so tragic happened in a city that understands what terrorism really is, is so insensitive and it just, it's part of their ideology to create this us versus them, this hate-filled rhetoric. It's the same with the "we are against the police, we are against prisons, we are against, you know, Israel", it just, it becomes this, anything that they can find to create some type of discord between people, they are doing and they are highlighting and they are pushing. My ex-husband's Jewish, my kids have a Jewish last name. I have a lot of Jewish family, a lot of Jewish friends. And when other people are using terms like apartheid, genocide, these are very scary words for people of the Jewish faith. And it's insensitive and it's wrong and we're all Americans and we all should be coming together in support of each other, not creating fear and anxiety and using words that are really terrifying for a lot of people that live in this city."
"I perfectly agree with you. Before doing the translation, do you believe that when we saw the movement of Black Lives Matter and all the violence and all the looting, do you believe that there is a common basis, a common ground, despite of having different ideologies and different demands, do you think that there is a common core between these two movements?"
"Yes, I believe that again, it is drawn up, you know, a lot of it is really drummed up on social media and depending on, you know, what you follow and what you don't, you know, you can get pulled into these movements with a lot of propaganda that gets passed around through social media. And it's coming from the same party, it's coming from the Democratic Socialist Party and it's coming from the Working Families Party and it's a lot of, you know, rhetoric and it stirs up marginalized groups. And eventually, these marginalized groups, they come at the expense of another marginalized group. So, this is something that I really, and I think everybody in New York and everybody across the country, you know, this isn't who we are as Americans and we really want, we really need to work hard to not have these platforms available like a city council seat or an assembly seat or a congressional seat, where they can push these agendas and continue to fan the flames. And we really need to vote for people that are against hate and are for working with the people and doing the right thing for democracy."
Ρωτήσαμε την κυρία Kelly Klingman όσον αφορά τον πόλεμο στο Ισραήλ και όλα αυτά που βλέπουμε στους δρόμους της Νέας Ιόρκης, με φιλοπαλαιστήνιους και ανθρώπους που στηρίζουν την χαμάς, να σκίζουν αφίσες με τους απαχθέντες, να βλέπουμε, να φωνάζουν υπέρ της τρομοκρατίας. Η ίδια λέει ότι είναι ακριβώς το ίδιο πρόβλημα. "Έχουμε έλλειψει ηγετών όπως ο Peter Vallone, ο οποίος για 30 χρόνια υπηρέτησε τη Νέα Ιόρκη και την περιοχή μας και δημιουργώντας ένα περιβάλλον ηρενικό, ένα περιβάλλον στο οποίο μπορούσαμε να ζήσουμε. Τώρα δεν υπάρχει ευαισθησία, τώρα κάποιοι στηρίζουν την τρομοκρατία. Τώρα είναι η λογική "us versus them", "εμείς εναντίον αυτών", είναι εναντίον της αστυνομίας, εναντίον των φυλακών, εναντίον του Ισραήλ. Όπως είπε η ίδια, ο πρόην άντρας της είναι ευρέος. Τα παιδιά της έχουν ευραικό θρύσκευμα και έχει ευραικό όνομα βεβαίως. Δεν μπορεί να βλέπει να χρησιμοποιούν λέξεις όπως το apartheid, να χρησιμοποιούν λέξεις όπως η γενοκτονία, το genocide. Είναι πάρα πολύ άσχημο αυτό και σκυρίως σε μια πόλη που έχει ζει στην τρομοκρατία με το 9/11 και είναι λογικό αυτό εδώ πέρα, και μάλιστα λέει χαρακτηριστικά, "Δεν είμαστε αυτοί εμείς". Όταν τη ρωτήσα, εάν το Black Lives Matter συνδέεται ουσιαστικά με αυτό το οποίο βλέπουμε, παρότι είναι διαφορετικά ζητήματα, αν η βάση είναι η ίδια, λέει, "Ναι, το πιστεύω", είναι το Democratic Social Party, είναι το Working Families Party, είναι όλοι αυτοί οι οποίοι ρίχνουν λάδι στη φωτιά και οι οποίοι προσπαθούν να φέρουν αυτή την αστάθεια. "Of course, yesterday night, we had the 21-year-old student from Cornell University, that he was taken, of course, to the court. They didn't bail him and that's a good, this is good news, of course. Do you think that there should be a very exemplary penalty for this case?"
"I don't really know much about, I mean, I know a little bit about the case from what I've read and commenting on something like that, I'm not too sure of. But, you know, I believe that anything that is, you know, hate-based, whether it's against Israelis, whether it's against other marginalized groups, it's something that should be taken very seriously. And, you know, here in New York City, we did, you know, we do have legislation that does seriously take in effect penalties for anything that's associated with a hate crime, which I fully support."
Ρωτήσαμε για την Χθεσσινοβραδινή, παραπομπής στο δικαστήριο του 21 ετών, φετιτή του Cornell University, του Patrick Die, είπε η ίδια ότι δεν γνωρίζει πολύ καλά την υπόθεση, όμως πρέπει να υπάρχει, να υπάρχουν αυστηρές πινές όταν μιλάμε για εγκληματαμίσους, όταν μιλάμε για ρητόρικες, εναντίον όχι μόνο των Ισραηλινών, αλλά και οποιοδήποτε άλλο, πρέπει το σύστημα να είναι ιδιαίτερα αυστηρό. "So, now, we go, there are so many things to talk about. You are a happy mother of two beautiful twins. And to be honest, I don't know about politics, I know about twins and I know the difficulties, I know the concern, I know the problems. And our kids are the only hope and our kids do not have the future that we should offer them. Do you feel that Astoria, for example, is having problems with the school system? We see a school system with so many problems and, you know, it's an oxymoron because we have more means than our parents did and we have a worse education than we did have. We have more money, we have more technology, but at the end of the day, we have less educated kids and we have kids that are facing problems. What are the problems and what can you do to change the system?"
"Well, we have a mental health problem, a mental health crisis that has really stemmed from, you know, Covid and the lockdowns and there's been a lot of learning loss. I know in my kid's school, you know, there's a couple of kids that have been held back. And Astoria has great schools. Astoria is a community where I love that I have the ability to raise my kids here. And they went to PS122. I unfortunately had to move them out during the Covid pandemic because they were having a hard time with blended learning. And I was able to afford to put them in a parochial school, they go to Immaculate Conception now. And not everybody has that choice. And so, we also have charter schools in the district as well, which is wonderful because that gives us an opportunity for some communities that have different type learning children, disabilities or, you know, they just learn in a different way to have options to put their kids in a charter school. And a lot of the city council members are trying to cap charter schools, try to get rid of the charter schools altogether and that's something that I fundamentally disagree with. And regards to the way the education is going, which it is going down, I mean, the test scores are abysmal now. But we need to help our teachers. Our teachers need, they need help in the schools, they need resources, they need mental health professionals. They're dealing with large classroom sizes, they're dealing with, you know, standardized tests and everything, all the curriculum is based on testing, testing, testing. And they're struggling and our teachers need help. They're still buying their own school supplies every year. And, you know, this is something like, you have all this funding coming in for the schools but it's not translating, you know, and allocated to the teachers and what they need and the resources they need and the classroom sizes to be smaller. And that is something that is very important to me and that is something that I will be a champion of in City Hall."
Ρωτήσαμε την κυρία Kelly Klingman, έχει δύο διδυμάκια, 10 ετών, τα οποία βεβαίως είναι πολύ περίφανοι για τα παιδιά της και χαρούμενοι, αλλά δεν είναι η εποχή για τα παιδιά, τα παιδιά περνάνε δύσκολα. Πριν από τα προηγούμενα χρόνια είχαμε λιγότερα χρήματα και λιγότερη τεχνολογία, αλλά παρόλα αυτά είχαμε καλύτερη παιδεία, σήμερα έχουμε πολλά λεφτά και τεχνολογία, δεν έχουμε παιδεία καλή. Είπε, λέει χαρακτηριστικά ότι όλα είναι, ξεκινάνε απ' το mental health, δεν υπάρχει η πρόληψη και δεν υπάρχει η αντιμετώπιση αυτού του προβλήματος. Ο Covid σίγουρα δημιουργήσει πολλά προβλήματα, υπήρχαν πάρα πολλά και να στα μαθήματα πολλά παιδιά μείνανε πίσω λόγω του lockdown και του distant learning. Η Αστόρια είναι μια περιοχή που έχει great schools, έχει εξαιρετικά σχολεία. Τα παιδιά της πηγαίναν στο PS122, στο PS122, ένα πολύ καλό σχολείο, όμως αναγκάστηκε λόγω του ότι τα μαθήματα ήταν τέτοια, που κάνανε και το distant learning και όλα αυτά εδώ πέρα, αναγκάστηκε να τα πάρει σ' ένα άλλο ιδιωτικό σχολείο, σ' ένα σχολείο το οποίο η ίδια μπορεί να τα πάει σ' ένα private school. Όμως δεν μπορούν όλοι να τα πάνε. Υπάρχουν τα charter schools, υπάρχουν διαφορετικά συστήματα για διαφορετικές ανάγκες παιδιών, παιδιά τα οποία έχουν ιδιαιτερότητες. Πολλά μέρη του Συμβουλίου της της Νέας Ιόρκης, του Δημοτικού Συμβουλίου, θέλουν να ακυρώσουν τα charter schools. Διαφονώ, λέει, κάθετα σ' αυτό, με κανέναν τρόπο δεν πρέπει να το κάνουμε, πρέπει να βοηθήσουμε όμως και τους δάσκαλους. "We need to help our teachers", λέει η κυρία Kelly Klingman, "να δώσουμε τα resources για τα οποία πληρώνουν οι ίδιοι, να στηρίξουμε μέσω της ψυχικής υγείας, του mental health. Υπάρχουν μεγάλες τάξεις, υπάρχουν το testing, το οποίο είναι τα πάντα, είναι γύρω απ' το testing. Εκεί επικεντρώνεται το σύστημα, εκεί είναι λάθος. Τα school supplies, οι καθηγητές, οι δάσκαλοι, τα οραζούν οι ίδιοι. Πρέπει εμείς να στηρίξουμε. Υπάρχει το funding, αλλά τα χρήματα δεν διανέμονται, δεν δίδονται όπως θα έπρεπε να δίνονται. Οπότε πρέπει αυτό να προσέξουμε με κάθε τρόπο, λέει χαρακτηριστικά η κυρία Kelly Klingman. "Kelly, of course, as I say, I used to live in Astoria. I used to live in Astoria for many years and we moved to Nassau County. We moved to Nassau County and every time I come back to Astoria, I get to remember why I left Astoria. And this has to do with many different reasons. One reason, of course, is the parking. One another reason is the parking tickets. I come here to go shopping in the Greek supermarkets, for example. I want to leave money in Astoria, but I pay more money on tickets every time than I pay for my supermarket. So, the question is, what can we do? We see there was no parking in New York and I see everywhere new ways for bicycles. I see new ways for all these things that do not obey even to the rules and to the laws. And instead of creating parking spots, we have even less parking spots. And you said something very correct before, that we used to tell our kids what's right, what's left. Now, they should even watch up, down, it's crazy. What can we do to improve the parking, the traffic in Astoria?"
"We have to involve all the stakeholders and we have to bring the city agencies together. You know, the councilwoman had a meeting, and I'm not sure if you're aware, when she had over 100 people come to this meeting for the DOT to take 31st Avenue and make it a one-way and make it into Bike Boulevard, as somebody referred to it. The problem with that is that that just went straight with DOT and it didn't involve everybody in the community, it didn't involve the NYPD, which is another stakeholder if we're talking about pedestrian safety and the way the traffic's gonna flow. So, we need to take this look as a community and we need to get together and work with all the different agencies. So, what they did on 21st Street is they turned that into one-way and then they have, you know, all, one bike lane, not bike lane, a bus lane now. And they moved the trucks. And so, now the trucks go down Astoria Boulevard and go over on 8th Street to Vernon Boulevard. And they cut right in front of the Astoria houses. And those kids that are going up to 21st Street to go to their school are now left in a very unsafe position with trucks coming down this residential street instead of going down 21st Street, which they used to do. And that is causing such a hazard and what complicates that even more is that there is a crossing guard shortage. So, when they try to get crossing guards to make it safe for them to cross the street, they're left to fend for themselves. So, you have the community now trying to help these kids cross the street and navigate trucks. And again, this is all unintended consequences of just using one agency, one stakeholder, not involving the community in these decisions. So, as you said, like parking is going away, I don't know if you've noticed now, there's electric car parking that's taking up some of the spaces as well. We've still got the dining sheds, we're putting in city bikes, you know, the city bikes. You know, you're basically, as a business owner, and this is a correct way to feel, as a small business owner, you say you are replacing my parking that takes my business for another business because city bike is a business. So, this is something that, you know, if you're dealing with, you know, business owners in your district and business owners are the lifeblood of Astoria, as you know, it makes us who we are. And you're replacing it with another business, that's not fair even."
Ρωτήσαμε την κυρία Kelly Klingman, τι γίνεται με το parking, τι γίνεται με το traffic, τι γίνεται με όλα αυτά τα προβλήματα; Μας είπε η ίδια ότι υπάρχουν μεγάλα προβλήματα. Όπως μας είπε η κυρία Kaban, η οποία έκανε ένα meeting για την μονοδρόμηση του 31st Street, έχουμε το πρόβλημα ότι το Department of Transportation συμμετείχε στο meeting, αλλά όχι το NYPD και όχι τα άλλα πρακτορία που έχουν ευθύνη, οι άλλοι τομείς ευθύνης, αν θέλετε, και οι άλλοι φορείς ευθύνης, πρέπει όλοι μαζί να κάνουμε κάτι. Δεν μπορεί να υπάρχει μονοδρόμηση του 21 Street, δηλαδή. Εκεί που ήταν δύο ρεύματα, είναι ένα ρεύμα και το ένα είναι bus lane. Τα φορτιγά αντί να πηγαίνουν απ' το 21, πηγαίνουν απ' το Astoria Boulevard και 8 δρόμους, 8th Street, εκεί όπου περνάνε μπροστά απ' τα κτίρια, από μένει πολύς κόσμος, και τα παιδιά δεν μπορούν να περάσουν ευκολά και με ασφάλεια απέναντι. Και βέβαια, την ίδια στιγμή δεν υπάρχουν crossing guards, δεν υπάρχουν οι άνθρωποι που δουλεύουν για να μεταφέρουν τα παιδιά με ασφάλεια ή τροχονόμη απέναντι. Όπως λέει, υπάρχει τεράστιο πρόβλημα με το parking. Χάθηκαν να θέσεις parking με το city bike, το οποίο είναι μια επιχείρηση. Κι όμως δίνουμε θέσεις για parking και χτυπάμε τις επιχειρήσεις εδώ. Χάθηκαν να θέσεις από τα diners και από τα εστιατόρια που βγάζουν εξωτραπεζάκια. Χάθηκαν θέσεις απ' όλα αυτά τα οποία γίνονται, και τελικά δεν υπάρχει καμία λογική. Κέλι, regarding the business, you know, United States used to be a capitalist country, they used to be. Now, it seems like a crime to be a business owner, especially having a small business. And we see, and they always complain to me about tickets from the Department of Environment, Department of Buildings. There is a huge chaos. They feel the business owners, especially in Astoria, that they're being punished for making money. They're being punished for giving their services. How can we change this?
There's a lot, there's a lot of stuff. You can't, even permitting is incredibly expensive, you know, and we have, I have a business owner that's on the corner, like around Newtown Avenue and 30th, and he has a restaurant, spent all kinds of money to paint the side of it, licensing for outside dining, and he's dealing with illegal food truck vendors that are coming right up to the building and damaging the side of the building. And he says, "I've done everything correctly, I've paid all these prices", which they just continue to push on the business owners, this license, this fine. The DAP comes in and says, "My noise is up because somebody complains next door", and now I have to deal with lawlessness and this damaging. And they don't have to pay any licenses, they don't have to pay any tickets, they don't have to pay any fines. So, to fix this problem is, again, I think that there's a 30th Avenue Business Association that's been put together. There's another business association that's being put together on Ditmars, and they're trying to fight back. They do a build the block meeting with the NYPD to deal with some of the harassment that they get from, you know, homeless and mentally ill on the streets, along with retail theft. But they're doing it on their own, and they're, because they don't have representation. They feel like they don't, again, just like the people on, in the Astoria houses, on 21st Street. They feel like they have to fend for themselves, they have to fight back on their own. And what I'm trying to say is, I'm running for office because I want to fight for the people of Astoria, I want to fight for the small businesses, I want to fight for also, you know, the landlords. The landlords here that have most of our affordable housing stock are really hurting. They were hit very hard with the laws of 2019 that, you know, control some of the rent stabilization apartment buildings. They can't afford the investments they have to make to get the rents that they need to achieve. So, I'm running for city council because I want to help the people of Astoria. I want to help the business owners. I want to get into office to advocate on their behalf and to address a lot of these issues that are major concerns in the district.
Ρωτήσαμε την κυρία Kelly Klingman όσον αφορά τις μικρές επιχειρήσεις, τα small businesses. Μας λέει ότι υπάρχει μια επιχείρηση στο Newton και 30 Avenue, ένα εστιατόριο, το οποίο πληρώνει λεφτά για άδειες που έχουν φτάσει πολύ ψηλά οι τιμές, πληρώνει πρόστιμα, πληρώνει να φτιάξει το περιβάλλον, να φτιάξει τον δρόμο, το πεζοδρόμιο, και τελικά πηγαίνουν παράνομοι food vendors απ' έξω με trucks, με φορτιγά. Δεν πληρώνουν αυτοί τα ίδια χρήματα με τον ίδιο και καταφέρουν να χτυπήσουν την επιχείρησή του. Υπάρχει ανομία, δεν υπάρχουν πρόστιμα για αυτούς τους ανθρώπους. Τα πρόστιμα πηγαίνουν στον ίδιο ακόμα και για το επίπεδο του θορύβου με στο μαγαζί. Υπάρχει το στο 30 Avenue, οι business owners, οι οποίοι κάναν ένα, μια συμμαχία όλοι μαζί. Στον Ditmars, κάτι παρόμοιο, μαζί με το NYPD. Προσπαθούν να αποφύγουν το harassment από μεθισμένους, από άστεγους, από εγκλιματικά στοιχεία, από τους κλεφτές, γιατί υπάρχει το self lifting που είπαμε προηγουμένως. Αλλά δεν είναι αυτή η λύση. Πρέπει εκεί να είναι ο σύμβουλος απ' το Δημαρχείο της Νέας Ιόρκης. Εκεί πρέπει να υπάρχει η κατάσταση να είναι διαφορετική. Είναι ακριβώς το ίδιο όπως έγινε στο 21 Street, όπως μας είπε η ίδια. Και βέβαια, τονίζει και για τους ανθρώπους οι οποίοι κάνουν μια επένδυση και έχουνε σπίτια με το νόμο του 2019, έχουν τεράστια προβλήματα με το rent stabilized control. The last one year, I'm also working on real estate. And I can say that before, I could hear complaints. Now, I cannot believe what I see. And I'm saying this why? Because people, landlords, prefer to have their houses empty than bring somebody in that they will never be able to evict. Somebody is able not to pay the rent and stay in the house. Somebody is able to sublease the house and stay in the house. Somebody can use it as a BRMB, and again, nobody touches him. So, the landlords are desperate. There is no protection from the state, from the city. What can you do on that? I mean, I don't know if you realize this problem, but it's huge.
I do. I actually, you know, I've been working in real estate for 22 years. I've done the financial management, asset management, property management. I worked in 2008 to try to save a bunch of rent stabilized portfolios, which I successfully was able to do when we had the financial crisis. I understand all the laws, all the regulations that are just crippling affordable housing. The answer to affordable housing is not to build more housing. The answer to affordable housing is to help those who can rent their homes, rent their rent stabilized buildings. We should be incentivizing them, we should take some of this burden, some stuff off. We need to get the court system moving. You have people that are waiting to get eviction hearings for 18 months, two years. You know, that, the backup in the courts needs to be addressed. And some of the legislation that's coming through, I believe, needs to be repealed. The 2019 laws need to be pushed back. And then you also have something called Local Law 97, which is going to affect middle-class owners of co-ops and condominiums. They have to retrofit old buildings to reach these energy standards by 2030 that are just gonna cost millions of dollars for the shareholders, it's gonna increase their maintenance amounts. A lot of these policies that are coming down the pipeline hurt the middle and the lower class the most. So, my whole philosophy to get in there is to basically roll back some of these laws that are burdensome, to stop Local Law 97, which a couple other council members have pushed a bill called Intro 913 to roll that back for at least seven years until the technology can catch up and we're not spending $10 million in a building to retrofit. And I find housing to be the most critical crisis of this time, right now. You're looking at apartments that, like you said, probably 100,000 apartments throughout the city are now what we call warehoused, meaning they're just not put on the market because they can't invest the money to get them renovated and up to code and to get a rent that makes sense.
Correct, absolutely correct. Ρωτήσαμε την κυρία Kelly Klingman για ένα τα τεράστια προβλήματα που είναι το real estate. Εγώ ασχολούμαι με το real estate εδώ και είναι περίπου ένα χρόνο, και πραγματικά αυτά που βλέπουν τα μάτια μου, δεν μπορώ να τα πιστέψω. Η ίδια λέει ότι ασχολείται 22 χρόνια με το real estate, σε κάθε μορφή του real estate. Και μάλιστα το 2008 κατάφερε να σώσει αρκετά portfolios με το rent stabilized, με την κρίση που υπήρξε τότε στην αγορά. Υπάρχει πρόβλημα με τους νόμους. Το πρόβλημα με το affordable housing, δεν είναι, με τα σπίτια με χαμηλότερες τιμές, δεν είναι να χτίσουμε καινούρια σπίτια, είναι να βοηθήσουμε τους ιδιοκτήτες να μπορούν να ξεπεράσουν τα προβλήματα, να δώσουμε κίνητρο και να βγάλουμε απ' τη μέση τα εμπόδια τα οποία δημιουργούν τεράστιο ζήτημα. Υπάρχει ένα πρόβλημα με το court system, με τα δικαστήρια. Υπάρχει ένα πρόβλημα γιατί υπάρχουν άνθρωποι που περιμένουν να εκδικαστεί η υπόθεσή τους 18 ή 24 μήνες, έναμιση χρόνο ή δύο χρόνια. Υπάρχει επίσης το local law 97, το οποίο τι είναι αυτό; Είναι ο νόμος για τα co-ops και τα condominiums, ο οποίος ουσιαστικά δημιουργεί ένα τεράστιο πρόβλημα για την ενέργεια και τα χρήματα που πρέπει να ξοδευτούν. Αυτό θα μεγαλώσει βεβαίως τα έξοδα των ανθρώπων, των μετόχων αυτών των κτιρίων, άταμέντεναν σφίσι, θα πάνε πάρα πολύ ψηλά. Πρέπει όλα αυτά, μας λέει η κυρία Klingman, να τα βάλουμε στην άκρη, πρέπει να θεωρήσουμε κάποιους νόμους, όπως το local law 97, όπως το πρόβλημα με τα δικαστήρια. Και βέβαια, πρέπει να δώσουμε μια παράταση 7 ετών για μέχρι η τεχνολογία να είναι τέτοια που θα μπορούμε να την αξιοποιήσουμε και να μην ξοδεύσουμε τώρα 10 εκατομμύρια και να πάνε χαμένα. Επίσης, υπάρχει το πρόβλημα με τα warehouses, όπως λέει χαρακτηριστικά. Σπίτια τα οποία μένουν άδεια τελικά, γιατί δεν μπορούν οι ιδιοκτήτες να κάνουν αυτό το investment, δεν μπορούν οι ιδιοκτήτες να ξοδεύσουν αυτά τα ποσά. Κέλι, we are 48 minutes after 9 here on Elas FM. Δήμητρα Φιλιππίδης, always on the air. For somebody who would ask, who is, and this is something that I didn't want to start with, because, you know, sometimes in politics, we know more things about the politicians than about their agenda. With you, and I'm happy we did so, we started with your agenda, and then we end up with who Kelly Klingman is.
So, I'm just a working mom that loves this city. I've been in New York City for about 22 years, 23 years now. And I moved to Astoria before I had my kids. And I come from an immigrant family, my mother's Italian and my father is Polish. And I just, I remember growing up with aunts and uncles on every corner. And family and church and faith and community was something that was just instilled in me my whole life. And when I first came to Astoria and I walked around and I met the people, I said, "This is where I want to raise my kids, because this is how I grew up. And these are the people that, you know, you go out and you help your neighbor and you work together and you smile and you know each other in the restaurants and you support each other." And I have twins, I'm a single mom, and at the time, this whole community rallied around me to help me raise my kids. And I couldn't think of a better place to raise my family and to live outside of where I could live with my own family. And I just, I love it here, and the reason why I'm running for office is because I love the people of Astoria.
Ρωτήσαμε την κυρία Kelly Klingman, είπαμε η πολιτική ατζέντα προηγείται της προσωπικής ζωής, αυτό είναι βασικότερο. Αλλά ποια είναι η Κέλι; Η Κέλι μας είπε ότι είναι 22 χρόνια στην Αστόρια, πριν ακόμα κάνει τα παιδιά της, μεγάλωσε εδώ. Και βεβαίως ζεις εδώ πέρα με θεούς και θεές σε κάθε γονία, με την οικογένεια. Είναι με καταγωγή, είναι και η ίδια μετανάστρια. Η γονή της από Ιταλία και Πολυνία. Είπε ότι εδώ πέρα, όταν γνώρισε την Αστόρια, είπε εδώ πέρα θέλω να μεγαλώσω τα παιδιά μου, με το χαμόγελο, με την υποστήριξη ο ένας προς τον άλλον, για μένα είναι, λέει, "Αγάπω αυτή τη city, I love this city", λέει η Kelly Klingman. Έχω τα διδημάμα εδώ πέρα, προσπαθώ με κάθε τρόπο να κάνω ό,τι καλύτερο μπορώ γι' αυτή την πόλη. Αυτός είναι και ο λόγος που είμαι υποψήφια. Κέλι, of course, Astoria used to be so Greek. Today, it's not as Greek, but you can always see the Greek element. What's your experience with the Greek community? What's your cooperation with the Greek community? And let it, put it this way. After Kosta Kostatinidi, we are left without, he was the first and the last, we don't have another one, a Greek councilman, exactly. Can we, the Greek community, we are all listening to you today, can we consider you as an honorary Greek?
Yes, yes, I am one of you. It's so funny, because my landlords, their family name is Silos, and I moved into their house 12 years ago. And they're in their late 80s now, and they consider me family, which I think is wonderful. We've been through, my kids, we've been through Covid together. And it's funny, because they always say, "Well, we can call you Kelly, it's like a Greek name." It's kind of, so to justify them feeling that I'm part of the family. Yes, again, I love the Greek community here, they are part of my family. And it's, this neighborhood is so special and so wonderful to me. Gregory's around the corner, they had twins, twin grandson and granddaughter. Three months after I had my twins, they all go to school together. We go to Gregory's on the corner, and the kids get together, which is wonderful, so.
Ρωτήσαμε την Kelly Klingman, αν θεωρείται ως όνοραρη Γκρικ, ως επίτημη Ελληνίδα. Είναι, ζεις εδώ πέρα, λέει, "Ναι, έτσι νιώθω", και νιώθω, ζώ σε μια, νικιάζω σπίτι εδώ και 12 χρόνια σε μια οικογένεια σύλλας, στο όνομα. Είναι στα 80 τους, ζήσαμε μαζί, πολλές εμπειρίες, όπως ο Covid. Τα παιδιά τα οποία γεννήθηκαν, τα παιδιά μου, μάλιστα λέει, με φωνάζουν, λέει, "Θα μπορούσες να είσαι Ελληνίδα με το όνομα Καϊόπι", και το οποίο γίνεται Κέλι. Στο Gregory's Corner, εκεί πέρα όπου υπάρχουν τα εγγόνια τα οποία γεννήθηκαν με τρεις μήνες, διαφορετικά απ' τα δικά της, και όλα τα παιδιά κάνουν απαραία. "Ναι, πραγματικά νιώθει αυτή την επαφή". And we Greeks and Italians, we say una faccia, una raza. One face, one race, so we have many similarities. Anyway, let me see some of the comments. Yes, one of the questions that I have about the illegal immigrants. And the mayor, he seems to be not from another city, but from another planet, let me say. He was the one who invited the immigrants, and now he's trying to find ways to get rid of the immigrants, knowing that the budget is getting destroyed by the needs for immigrants. What's your position on this?
It's not just the budget, it's the neighborhoods are being affected as well. You know, we have a lot of prostitution that's happening in Corona in Queens. That's happening, you know, it's out there, parents are really upset. They're getting, you know, it's in front of their children walking to school, that whole neighborhood is being affected. Like I said, there's certain parts of the city that are also being affected. We had a small migrant shelter here in Astoria on 12th Street, and they actually canceled their contract with the city as of October 31st. However, you know, we are seeing them now in the streets. We have some, because we're close to it where I live, we have them, you know, going through the side alleys and taking bottles and then also like checking to see if front doors are open and cars. So, they're in a very desperate situation, and we don't have any leadership that's really addressing the problem. And we don't even know from our current city council person, like, how many shelters are in Astoria, how many are coming to Astoria, what's being done with the migrants in Astoria. So, it's a problem that we just can't continue to sit there and just pass the buck on, "Oh, well, it's the federal government's problem, oh, well, it's the state's problem, oh, well, you know, we're trying to stop it and we've got a problem with the budget and we're not addressing it." I think we really need to take a look as a city at the right-to-shelter laws, and we need to also really, you know, start having conversations about how we're going to address it. And one thing that I've noticed that works in other districts and doesn't work with a lot of these democratic socialist politicians is that they just point fingers, place blame, and don't address the issues. And what I see in other districts is they turn around, they work together, they say, "No, okay, fine, if we can't do this, what can we do? Let's brainstorm, let's be creative, let's figure this out, and let's make sure that our part, our little part, whether that's District 19 or District 26, is not affected by what's going on in the rest of the city." I'm not, I will do my best in City Hall, but what I know that I can do is I can take care of Astoria and I can take care of the district. I don't know if I can change the whole city, but I can definitely make sure that our little sliver of the city is protected, well-funded, and well-taken care of.